I would like Commissioner Ashbrook, Leeson to pledge and Mr. Anderson to say a prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Dear heavenly Father, we thank you for this opportunity to come here to do the work in the city of Fort St. Joe. We ask that you be with our country, we ask that you be with our city, and be with our state. We ask that you give us wisdom to make sound decisions today for the citizens of Fort St. Joe. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I'd like to call the regular meeting of the Fort St. Joe City Commission to order. And the first item on the agenda is a consent agenda, which consists of the minutes of regular meeting of September fifteenth, the special meeting of September fifteenth, and the special meeting of September twenty ninth. So if everyone's had a chance to read over those, I would entertain a motion to approve. There's a motion by Commissioner Ashbrook there, second. Second by Commissioner Langston. Any discussion? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign. Motion passed, four of them. All right, Mr. City Attorney?
Yes, Mayor, we have two resolutions for the board's consideration this afternoon. It's Resolution two twenty oh five, it deals with the Firdap grant at Fort Park. Resolution twenty oh six, it's a State Revolving Fund wastewater loan application. Just need motions to adopt each one, and then I'll read it.
Okay, the first would be a Resolution twenty twenty dash oh five, which deals with the Firdap application for RS Park. Do I have a motion to approve the resolution? There's a motion by Commissioner Hoffman there, second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Ashbrook. Any discussion on the, on the motion? All in favor, aye. Close, same sign. Motion passed, four of them.
Commissioner, just one comment. We actually have two that we're actually applying for. The one for Fort Park required a resolution because it's not in your capital improvement plan, but we also have one that we're working on that's going to be for the Washington G M complex. So we have two, just one for ours.
Right, so everybody understands we're not ignoring the Washington G M area of the Firdap that just got acquired. Resolution number twenty twenty oh five, a resolution of the city of Fort St. Joe, Florida, to apply for a grant from the state of Florida, Florida Recreational Development Assistant Program for primaries and support recreation areas and facilities at Fort Park.
Alrighty. Next resolution is twenty twenty dash oh six, which is a wastewater loan application to, that is to the State Revolving Fund.
Motion to adopt.
Okay, that's a motion to adopt Resolution twenty twenty dash oh six, there's a second. Second by Commissioner Langston. Discussion, anyone? All in favor, aye. Close, same sign. Motion passes, five of them.
Resolution twenty twenty oh six, a resolution of the city of Fort St. Joe, Florida, relating to the State Revolving Fund Loan Program, making findings, authorizing the loan application, authorizing the loan agreement, establishing pledged revenue, designated authorized representatives, providing assurances, providing for conflict, severability, and effectiveness.
Very good. Okay, under Old Business, Jim, you want to take the lead?
Yes, sir. The first item is coronavirus COVID-19. We are still working under a declaration of state of emergency here in the city and the state as well. The governor has moved us forward to phase three. And currently, he did state the timeframe that we were required to have Zoom or need, had the need for Zoom. We can't do that through the month of October. At this point, we've eliminated this point moving forward for any person needs, but we do have that available to move forward to the city.
Okay, I would like to make a comment that even though last meeting we lifted the requirement in the city for wearing masks, but we still are following CDC guidelines. We strongly encourage folks to wear a mask. Our positivity rates are down because we were wearing masks. And I would say we still need to be very conscious of that. We still have some folks popping up in our city that are positive, so the CDC guidelines are top three, wash your hands, social distance, wear your mask. So please consider that.
Moving along, the next item is Census twenty twenty. Census papers have been going door to door. Please take a few moments to be accountable for. This is critical for funding for our county and for our city. They did state it, I believe, through the latter part of October, but please make sure you're fully accounted for. The last item we had under Old Business, six and seventh street drain. Commissioner Hoffman, want to talk to you today about it?
The only thing I want to talk about today is approving this request to Jason White Construction and let them get started. I think we beat this up long enough. I know I've tried to get it done for three years, and there were others before me. The last time we had it torrential down, pouring rain, we had people had water in their shop and worried about watering their house. You've heard me say in the past, it's too big of a project to put on the backs of the city workers. So we have a price of forty-five thousand five hundred and sixty-five dollars. My understanding, he can get started pretty quick.
That's my understanding of you.
John, please come up, please.
Yes, Commissioner, I had a conversation with Mr. White approach the week, and it's something you can start on just a week.
And if you'll remember, we bought the materials. And we have the materials, and the price here reflects the city providing those materials. So we'd still be using them. I feel pretty sure all of us have had communications and answered the calls from constituents in that neighborhood. I think that we owe it to the people that we spoke to to move forward and get the job done.
Yep, I agree. Mike, do we have, where are we getting this money? I know we didn't budget for it, or did we budget last year?
No, it's unbudgeted. It'd have to come from insurance proceeds or FEMA proceeds from the hurricane.
Those are unencumbered insurance proceeds that we have, that we haven't already?
Yeah, the insurance specifically is unencumbered, yes.
Okay. All right, everybody understand that, everybody got their sheet on Jason White, and this would have to be considered under emergency declaration because of, otherwise we might have to bid it out. And I think you qualify for that, according to Mr. Anderson.
Yes, Mr. Grant.
Mayor, is this in line with the master runoff plan? I know we're expecting that any day now. This is in line with that plan, okay?
Yeah, I'm fine with that, okay. All right, I hear a motion to approve this Jason White Construction under emergency declaration.
Salute.
Motion by Commissioner Hoffman there, second. Second by Commissioner Ashbrook. Any more discussion? Anyone in the audience, please come forward.
Hello. Hello, Mr. Mayor, how are you?
Good.
I'm Jason White, Woodward Avenue. I'm near thirteenth street and at the last big downpour, what was that, switch hurricanes, man?
Sally.
Yeah, I did do a drive around, we had a meeting that day as well. It was horrible what was going on to those poor bugs on Sixth Avenue. What I see, though, is a lot of that maybe because, two, a pipe was put, you know, in the tenth street park some years ago. And that pipe, when you looked on this side of the pipe where the St. Joe Company's property is and everything?
Eighth Street.
Right, and before that, you saw lots of water backing up. And water will go to the place of least resistance, of course, and that causes flow down to those poor neighbors. I mean, seeing that poor lady stand out in front of her home with her house surrounded by water, it was, it's an off-grade property. But this is, again, what I've been talking about for over two years now. And we need to make sure that water is flowing the way water should flow. And not hurting neighbors, and not hurting homes, and not hurting the price of their homes because now they have water in their houses. That's not good for y'all.
That's the purpose of this, this repair.
I agree, and I just want to thank you for y'all starting to take care of that. We have many areas that need to be taken care of. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Anyone else? Any commissioners?
Yeah, I'd like to say something. I think there's a problem with our drainage system throughout the entire Fort St. Joe. I think that's one thing that this master plan, I think, is going to try to fix and help people because, you know, when I go around, I saw it, and, you know, it was a couple of feet in my yard, even though I'm low. Have a couple of pitches above me that water's coming, but I think this master plan is going to really help, help us all in this situation. Also, I think that, and I've said it time and time again, that we actually need a crew, desert made, to work on dishes year-round, from morning into the next. And I'm going to, I'm going to speed up, push that, even though some people may not agree with me, but that's just how I feel about that situation, so I'm going to continue to push it. And I think this master plan, we'll see a lot of change in what's going on with our drainage system.
Very good.
Thank you.
Anyone else? All in favor, aye. Close, same sign. Motion passed, five of them. So John, tell Mr. White he can start this afternoon.
I will. First item under New Business, project graduation. Commissioner Langston had someone that had approached him about project graduation.
Tony, they had called and actually they wanted to, you know, the Centennial Building to do a haunted house. I don't know the dates, but it's like six days, three days, the week before Halloween, and three days the week of Halloween. I told them that, I told them that I bring the Fort Board, I think it would be a good idea to let them use it. What it does is it raises money for, for the seniors' project graduation. We did a lot for them last year and the year before, and they asked quickly to do the Centennial Building this year.
Jim, do you have any dates?
Yes, sir, I was, I was in the process, there was two different projects on there. I was thinking they had one in the spring, actually for project graduation, they were needing for those things too. But I did talk to Mr. Norton yesterday, and they wanted the last two weeks in October, where they want to utilize for the Centennial Building, what he intended to be is what he wanted project grad, SGA wanted to be. Wanted to see if I could use any of them.
I think it's great. We work with the students, and we've always worked project graduation. And we just really need to make sure that we indicate to them our restrictions on what you can do inside the Centennial Building, since we renovated a lot of the inside, no stapling of, you know, anything to the wood and tape to the walls and those type things. They're going to have to do just about everything freestanding, but I wouldn't have a problem with it as long as they understand that and they're responsible. But if we waived the fee, we, we really don't have a whole lot of recourse to, except fix it ourselves with anything they do that's, we haven't allowed. So that's, that's just need, so anybody else?
I have the same concerns, Mayor, as long as they don't put holes in the wall, I'm happy with it.
Yeah. Anybody else got a comment? I think we probably need, well, we will need a motion to approve that. Comment from the audience, please come forward, state your name, sign in.
Keating here, by the way. On that subject, I can understand waiving the fee, but how about making put down a secure deposit? Because if they do do some damage, who has a secure deposit to record, to fix the problem? And then if nothing's done, they get that secure deposit, you know, back.
I don't have a problem with that, Morgan, but I probably got a feeling they don't have any money.
Well, you know, I feel, it'd be concerning about, I see where you're coming from. They're doing kind of damage, and sadly it's coming from the city. To repair it, you need the damage, you pay. And a secure deposit will be, you know.
And hopefully, that being said, hopefully this is a school project, and schools probably have some kind of liability, and we could, at least we could reach out to them to maybe have their people fix whatever. I'm not anticipating any damage, I'm just saying the little thing, we pulled about ten thousand staples out of the woodwork and we had it repainted, so it's, it can be a problem, I think. All right.
Motion approved.
Okay, motion of Commissioner Ashbrook to approve the project graduation request for the Centennial Building for two weeks in October for a haunted house, there's a second. Second, Commissioner Langston. Any more discussion? All in favor, aye. Close, same sign. Motion passed, five of them.
The next item we have is in reference to the Field of Dreams Housing Development. Commissioner Ashbrook wants to contribute a dollar.
Yeah, I think it was early September, I just asked the board if you'd be willing to listen to some proposals about utilizing that space for, I feel, our greatest need in town, which is housing for the people that work here. Mr. Mike Rogers had approached me from Southern Advocacy Group, and I believe he's here today. He'd like to take the mic and tell us a little bit about the project.
Sure, sure, come up. State your name for the record, please, and sign in.
Mike Rogers, and, Mr. Mayor, Commissioner, I want to thank you for your opportunity to spend a little bit of time with me today. I had a colleague on the phone, which I know this is kind of creative in terms of sharing information. I'll keep my comments very brief. Most of what I do in some form or fashion has to do with affordable housing. I'm on Florida Housing Coalition Board of Directors, I'm on the Health Finance Authority in Leon County, it's not a volunteer hat. So like I said, most of what I do in some form or fashion has to do with affordable housing. I don't think you tell the commission that we'll probably never have enough in the state of Florida. It's always a challenge. So this concept that we wanted to share with you today is just an idea that we think would work for the city of Fort St. Joe. And I'm going to have Jennifer Langwell, who's on the phone with me, with your permission there. I think I'm going to set my phone next to that microphone.
I'll be right there.
And she'll go through the packet that you sent her.
All right, very good.
Jennifer, can you hear us?
So I can hear you. I'm going to say good afternoon. Can you hear me?
I think we can.
Okay, wonderful. So my name's Jennifer Langwell. As Mike mentioned, I specialize in green building and sustainable development, and I've been doing this for twenty-two years now. I'm an engineer by trade, but also have a contractor's license, so very much boots-on-the-ground, understand how to make this work and make it both something the community could be proud of, as well as keep it affordable. I also do the back-of-house technical assistance for the Florida Rebuilding Coalition. And so we do focus on making affordable housing, not just affordable from first cost, but also from an operational standpoint of lower energy bills, lower water bills. And, you know, we're just at a point, I think, in our careers where we're, we're ready to give back. We see a lot of market rate stuff out there, and everyone can do that, but it really takes some creative inspirational ideas to get a workforce housing and affordable housing community put together and offer a benefit to the community. And so I know, or I believe, that Mike has provided you guys with some packets, and I apologize for not being there in person. And there's just a few slides to talk you through the concept. We would, of course, be looking to you guys for your leadership and guidance to really create something that works for your community. But on page one, we obviously want to pay attention to the local vernacular architecture and the feel of the community. On page two, I know that we had been provided with a previous site plan, and it looks like, or someone had mentioned that this could hold about two hundred and sixteen lots on it. But we also know that there's a really strong demand and drive to have some additional ballparks in the community. So if you look at page three, we would propose taking about five acres of the site and setting it aside for some additional youth ballfields. We need to obviously engineer this Army Corps and make sure everything was working from a wetland standpoint. But this is really what we're proposing, is first to give a set aside for the ballparks. And then what you see here is what we call a cluster design, or a pocket neighborhood development. And it's really a modified cluster design. And what it does is it allows you to have single-family homes. It allows you to minimize the operation and maintenance associated with yard work because instead of individual yards, you have more common green space. Kind of the sweet spot for those common greens is anywhere from a third to a half an acre. So we've, we've incorporated a few of those, and of course, we did add in a little bit of multifamily units, but this is, again, conceptual. And so when I talk about this cluster design, what I like about it is it creates these safe pathways. So instead of kids having to ride their bike on the streets, you actually have these pathways throughout the community where people can walk, the kids can bike, and they're not necessarily immediately adjacent to the streets. And so on page four, you can see what this, this lays out and looks like. You end up having street parking. We can also build in some garage space as needed. But you, you have a sidewalk that services basically a pod of what we would call cottages. And in the pictures you see on page four, there's actually one, two, and three-bedroom cottages around this little central, we can call it a little small green, but this is really just the colonnade associated with that pod of residences. We know there's a demand for one, two, and three-bedroom. We've looked at, so if you look at page five, an example of something where we would have a one-bedroom, something that was fairly compact in design, extremely affordable. Page six is a two-bedroom, again, trying to keep the porch, the front porch, the vernacular as much as possible. Page seven shows a two-bedroom, another two-bedroom, which happens to be the two-story version. And page eight, again, a similar concept, slightly modified roofline. And again, we're looking at constructibility and affordability from different rooflines and trusses. And page three, or sorry, page nine, is a three-bedroom. We also show a three-bedroom on page ten. So these are just our concepts of really where we're going with the idea and the vernacular. On page eleven, you do see multifamily, and so these happen to be quads. These are both two-bedroom and three-bedroom units. So each quad will either be all three-bedroom or all two-bedroom. This is actually a project located in Stock Island in the Keys, so it's one key up from Key West. This has been on site since about August of 2013 is when we completed the project. To date, we have lost one shutter from one building in all of the storms. So I just want to emphasize the fact that when you build right, you build durable, you build efficient, these houses can last a lifetime. And that's really what we're focused on, is certifying these homes, making sure they're efficient and durable because that's also a critical component to affordability. And so Mike, with that, that's, that's really what I was here to say.
Thank you very much.
Don't go away yet. So Commissioner, if you have any questions, we can pose those to Jennifer. Again, these are, these are concepts, so it's a, you know, it's a place to start. So I'd welcome any questions or any comments.
You have a proposal, it's a great idea, I think we all know we need workforce housing. What, are you intending to rent or sell the units?
The intention is to sell the units.
Sell the units, okay.
So with partnerships with Florida Housing Finance Corporation, the Florida Housing Coalition, we have other resources that no way could we get squeezed at all into an initial presentation. But we have ways of helping first-time home buyers, folks that, you know, need a leg up. So we will be here toward the end.
Got some, come up, please, I got a question from the audience. Chester, come up, I saw your hand, I think I saw another one back there.
I just basically just wanted to ask a question because they said quad and cluster. Does that mean that you will not do individual houses on particular properties that separate from clusters?
So this is one way that this could be developed, it's probably the most efficient way, but, you know, there are other ways that we can look at that. We're early in the process, there's evaluations that would need to be done on the property itself. So the clustered homes are still single-family detached, so all, all those are separate structures. The quadruplexes, that's, again, if that's something that the city would like to see. That's another way to get a little closer, in some cases, to the affordability.
It will, it will face upon the fact that we have properties that, like, same type? I'm not saying same with the others. If already, the property already was developed in the past, but they're in spots, in different spots. Not necessarily on a whole road, but just in different spots. So how would you, you know, where to buy out, buy out on North Side or somewhere, would you feel like a family house?
Well, this is on one specific piece of property. So this would be a number of clusters on that one parcel, okay?
Yes, ma'am, please come forward.
Mr. Mayor, you may leave today.
Glad to see you.
Good to see you too. I'm just wondering if this developer knows that we have a specialty deed, that this sixty acres was deeded to the city, citizen of Fort St. Joe. For, and here's the deed that I will put again in the record.
Thank you.
For recreational use. And so we've had a lawsuit over this, and, you know, not wanting this behind our homes. And as you can see with all the water we've had, it's a good thing we didn't start that project behind our homes. We'd all be brown. But regardless of all that, I do see Mr. McKnight here, who works for the county, and I assume he was one of the ones that helped match all this up, which I find interesting. So we have an interlocal agreement with the county to do a recreational facility for the taxpayers, for the citizens, on property that was deeded to the citizens. And nowhere in here does it talk about a development. It has to be for not-for-profit, it has to be for children, et cetera. So I just want to make sure that we walk carefully and cautiously because I'd hate for us all to get a call from St. Joe Company, and they ask for their sixty acres back. And I did a little bit of research, I noticed that this gentleman's company, it is an LLC, and that, you know, one of the documents I pulled up, it said it went inactive. I don't know if it's active again, it went inactive in 2015 or something like that. The last report was 2016. And although I do agree we need housing, we've got some housing going on over on the North Side. We saw kind of what happened to that during the hurricane. And I just get a little bit, you know, I guess, optimistically suspicious that we have sixty acres that belong to the city, and that means to the taxpayers. And so to carve out five acres where we don't know how many ponds, what kind of wetlands are over there, what kind of wetlands are over there, if you're ever even going to be able to build over there. I want to know, well, this company that is proposing 200 homes is going to build the ballpark first and let's get that all situated. And then what does St. Joe Company think about that? And I just wonder how Mr. Ashbrook found these folks or whatever. That's all for now.
Thank you very much. And Mayor, I can speak to the St. Joe Company. I actually did speak with Mr. George Gonzalez. And his need for housing is as great as ours with the Mariner going in. He's excited about this opportunity and says that he's been burned before by just handing land over willy-nilly and getting it flipped. But he said that if the land were put into a land trust, they would be on board. So with the city and citizens that own that land in perpetuity, but that's the way to keep the cost down forever by being in a trust.
Okay, got you.
Mr. Branch, you got a question or comment, whatever. Please come forward and state your name, sign the book.
Robert Branch, 1016 Morgan. In relation to what Ms. McRae would say, she pretty much put the word right out of my mouth. But I would like to add what you just said, Mr. Ashbrook, about now St. Joe is pretty much, they're working with you, with the city, what you're saying. You've already spoken with him.
And spoken to George Gonzalez.
And he has given y'all the blessings for this, in other words, pretty much. Do what y'all, do what you want to do, what you should have done in 2005 when this interlocal agreement was started. Everything has been done, the first item itself, as she spoke, number seven, which is the 60 acres that y'all have collected tax dollars on, didn't tell you anything? I've already presented that. That was part of the tourist dollars. This was, y'all had this for two years and nothing is being spent on it. But y'all have collected that for the decent part of it. This is actually item number seven.
Mr. Branch, just to clarify, the city collects zero dollars in bed tax.
The county does.
The county collects bed tax.
This is from, here's the interlocal agreement. Number seven is this fourth complex. Now, and also this is the deed, I understand. But right back where we started. This wouldn't get y'all with that. This is part of the recreational complex, y'all should have developed. Windmark got theirs, the interlocal agreement, for all the record, the interlocal agreement was due to the annexation of Windmark in 2005. Everything has been satisfied, that's what we're talking about now, this 60 acres.
The week, Mr. Branch, this is strictly a proposal. The city hasn't decided anything. The city is not working with the St. Joe Company. Mr. Ashbrook simply just asked the prep CEO of the company what he thought.
It seems like y'all have already made the deal.
No.
I just want to clarify that and appreciate it.
Okay.
I can assure you, no deals been made.
I was saying that.
I had a couple of questions.
Yeah, we all have questions and we're going to move on. Go ahead.
In reference to the selling of the units, instead of renting the units, would a seller be allowed to initially purchase the property and then turn around and utilize it for short-term or long-term rents?
A lot of those questions would have to be answered in the way the land trust itself is developed. So again, this is very preliminary. So the way land trust works is the land itself, the dirt, goes into the trust, which is not controlled by the developer, that's controlled by the community. So when a buyer comes in and buys a home, they're buying that home. Now, it's designed, land trusts are designed to encourage homeownership. So that, again, that would be a question that would be answered during due diligence.
Well, you understand my concern because I think we're...
People need to come and buy and rent?
Right, we're all in agreement that the city and the county both could utilize more affordable workforce housing. We're on board. But what we've seen happen in a lot of communities is they'll present and paint the picture of affordable housing and then the initial buyer, or maybe two or three buyers down the road, they flip that property and it becomes a short-term rental. And then all of the units become short-term rental. And we haven't really helped the community in any way other than helping the developer make a big bunch of money.
There, again, that's what the land trust is there to manage so that that can happen.
If we did manage it in that direction from day one and we just told you straight up, we would have to preclude any rentals, long-term or short-term, would you still be interested in development?
Yes. I was going to, in behind that conversation around land trusts, that's a very broad conversation. I'm happy to spend time with you on that. That's exactly why they exist.
Thank you. Mr. McKnight had a comment. If you'll come up, state your name, sign the book.
I'll do it. Jim McKnight, I'm the Economic Development Director for the county. And just to focus, talk about the need. I was part of the Long Term Recovery Committee, initially the chairman until we got switched over. We had surveys and everybody said we need workforce housing. That's the one priority in this county. University of Florida came in and has done some studies. They came back and number one need is workforce housing. Local business owners are moving around. They said, gosh, we got to have housing. I can't get people to work here. I want to bring back some people who used to work for me before the hurricane, but they don't have a place to live. And anytime we entertain a prospective business, it's not their first thing they ask about, but certainly on the list is workforce housing. Now, what the issue we have is, especially on the South End of the county, and believe it or not, getting to be on the North End, is property values are so high, there is no way you're going to have workforce housing. I mean, $50,000 a lot in either impact fees or time you put a, you know, excepting tank in a water system, you're at 60 grand and you haven't put a stick up yet. You know, so the problem we have, our policemen, our teachers, our nurses, local government workers, they can't live on this end of the county. We can become like Walton County and everybody that works in those jobs I just said, they live up in Freeport somewhere and they come in to work in the daytime. And that's what's going to happen. The Weewee Elementary School already has more kids. He needs to flip the size of the schools because the people who have kids are having to live up there. This gives you an opportunity, you won't need a ballpark, you don't need a sports complex. Who's going to play there? You're not going to have any kids to play there because it's shifting to the North. So, and I know, and I'm passionate about it because I know that that's what's happening and we have to have affordable housing. The key ingredients to this, and it's your job, all of our jobs, to make sure this is done correctly. But the key ingredient is you've got a great piece of property. You've got a great piece of property that was given to you by the St. Joe Company to be used for a sports complex. The St. Joe Company has subsequently said, you know what? We don't have a problem with that being used for affordable housing because that, we know that's the greatest thing. They are building, partnering people to build houses that meet everybody, they can afford 250, 275, 400,000 dollars. There's plenty of homes, not going to be a shortage of those. But that policeman, that teacher, needs to have a home that they can afford to live and initially move in. Now, the land trust works this way. You put the property in the land trust, okay? That means the property forevermore is there and the people buying the individual houses are only buying the house, okay? Now, they buy the house at, let's just say, they buy the house for $150,000, okay? They can eventually sell it or they can keep it forever. It could be passed on to the family. But if they choose to sell it, the land trust requirements will say you can only sell it for the amount that needs for one measure. There could be other measures. And again, all this is speculative. You could use the CPI indexes. CPI went up 2%, 5%, 1%. And I sell it after 10 years, whatever that percent is, then I could sell my house for no more than that amount, which means those houses are always workforce houses. They don't go away because they don't own the property. They own the house it sits on, the properties and trusts. So that allows you to, that allows you to have, whatever, we build 200, you're going to have, you're going to have the ability to keep that. In addition, the ship program that already exists, they will be able to find some down payment assistance. So we start with a $150,000 house, we get it down to 135, and we get good interest rates, we could really meet the affordability that we need to have. There will, the owner can get some equity in the house, but this is not a traditional house. If I go buy something, Jones Homestead, and 10 years from now, that property is going to be so much higher, I really get some equity back, return on my investment. You're going to get a return only to the point that the house is increased to the value of what you've allowed. And then you've got, all these are details to work out. You can do it, there are a lot of different ways, but you only can get that much. So I bought the $150,000 house and CPI went up back. I could sell for 165, I net 165, by the way. I paid down on that, so now only 0125. So you can build some equity, but it's not, truly not like a normal purchase. But remember, they were given the land and they were given down payment assistance. So there's a trade-off there. But a teacher moves into town and needs a house, a one-bedroom, they can get a house under this thing. There's no flipping, this is not tourist, people are going to rent it out to folks. Land trusts are difficult. Some of them are done poorly and some of them are done well. The devil's in the details. And you and all of us need to do diligence to make sure this one is one we can be proud of. This may be the last best chance for us to have affordable housing. You can do something special, provide a boat model for others around the country. I encourage you and I stand willing to work with you and working out some of the details, what is called the field of dream problem, if you build it and, quote, quoting the movie, yes, people will come. After that, we will not have affordable housing in South Hills County. And if we don't do something in the North part, we probably won't have that if we don't get something built in the next 50, 10 years.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate it. I would try to come to comment. So come in, Commissioner Ashbrook, bringing us a project we know we need. But it's a great project, it's a great idea, but it's in the wrong place. I felt strongly for a long time that the field of dreams was the future recreational needs of our children, grandchildren, in my case, great-grandchildren. We won't have any more property if we give that up for four ballparks. We need more ballparks than that right now, Mr. Rogers. I played on the ones on 10th Street. They've outlived their time. It's time for us to have a nice, we don't do anything for our kids. We need something for them. We do have other property though, not, from my perspective, not slamming the door. The city has other property that's more contiguous to the residential area of the city. It's about 50 acres and it's off the end of 16th Street. I think Commissioner Ashbrook knows about that property. And so I would be more than happy for you guys to look at that. But I just, we're going to have more people and we're going to have more children. They need to have a place to go. They need to have a place for good recreation, a good soccer fields and restroom facilities, probably eight ball fields. We got girls softball, it's very popular. I just, like I said, it's a great idea. I think we need to talk about a different place with the city. We don't have any more property. We give this up. We have nowhere to expand for our children's future recreational needs. So let's sit down and talk about it, if you're willing to talk about it.
This is the beginning of a conversation.
Absolutely.
We looked at that parcel and it's a great parcel. We have a lot of different applications without a doubt. And we came in knowing that, you know, that that parcel had been given to the city by St. Joe. So we were aware of that.
Yeah.
Again, this is a concept, it's a place to start. We'd like to work with the city, you know, to...
I know D.R. Horton's building 500 more at Windmark. They're not as affordable. They, St. Joe indicated to us that they're also going to build 200 on the north end of their property, which will be more in the workforce and portable range. So things are happening, are we getting oversaturated? I don't know, but we need to sit down and talk about it.
I think with affordable housing, it's, and I've grown up in Panhandle. I'm going to Tallahassee, I grew up coming over here to Fort St. Joe. Had a family member that was one of the ones that lost a home to Michael. So I literally have grown up over in this area because we, you know, we would like to make this project happen in Fort St. Joe. Welcome any conversation that we need to have to help the city get to where it wants to be. Affordable housing is going to be a town.
I'd be willing to sit down with you and let's talk about it.
So every one of you that has a packet, you've all got my contact information?
We've got two more commissioners that may want to make comments. So I'm going to start with Commissioner Branch.
We definitely need affordable homes. My question is, what will be the average cost of each home? I heard Mr. McKnight say about 60, I mean, 150,000, 160,000. What would be the average cost?
Because we're as early as we are in the process, it's a harder question to answer today than it even might be able to answer in two, three weeks. You know, our goal is to go from mid-100s to very low 2s. So that you, again, mid-100s would put you in a range where that's truly affordable. And then when you get into workforce, when you're talking about first responders, nurses, schoolteachers, young couples, then you can get a little bit higher in that price.
Yeah, see, my concern is more of like our teachers and correctional officers and people that work two jobs. My concern is them getting their first home, you know, getting their first home. And I think it's important that we focus on those people that don't really have a home right now. I mean, you know, a $300,000 home, you know, that's, some people can't afford that. So it's important for us to just have an open mind and try to think of ways to help these people. I feel I haven't made my mind up where right now. I like the proposal that you give. I like the concept of the homes and just the neighborhood. Like that setup with the ballparks around it. So right now, I'm just still in a thinking mode and haven't made my mind up where. But I definitely know that we need these. And I appreciate you coming. I want to thank Commissioner Ashbrook for bringing the board and Mr. McKnight. So basically, my thoughts right now is, is people that are working-class people getting into a home instead of renting an apartment. We've got enough of those around here for people to rent. They need something to own. That's how I feel about the entire thing. Thank you.
Mr. branch, you got a comment?
Yeah, just a couple. I pretty much came here in all ears today, but I appreciate you guys coming and the presentation. I think one of my main questions, we've got multi-unit housing, rental housing. If we were, if the board were opposed to multi-unit housing, would you still consider doing a development such as this?
The majority, the majority of that land that is dedicated to attach single-family, we added the duplexes just as another direction you could go if you want to.
And I do agree with you, Mayor. I mean, I definitely want to do something with a sports complex. We've kicked it around and kicked it around and I get calls still even today about doing something there. And I wouldn't be opposed to looking at that 50 acres there around 16th Street and 10th. One other question I do have, would you be asking for any impact fee waivers?
It would be totally up to the city. We would structure our project where our investors can make their money. You know, we can make what we need to make. Obviously, if you can't make money, you can't do it again. So, you know, we would have money built into that. And then what the city then would be able to do is to make a decision that you want to waive something, that goes directly back to the city. So it'd be very thankful.
That's really all I have.
Okay.
All right. I have one final thing. When you said that, you talked about the mid-100s. When you said that, you talked about the mid-one hundreds, I'm assuming that would reflect a one-bedroom, the smaller unit? And, and if my math is correct, sometimes it's not, your, your one-bedroom is roughly four hundred square feet. That's the minimum that I think you have to build out in Florida per code. And that comes out at three hundred and seventy-five dollars a square foot.
That's not where we plan to land, like I said, this is very, very preliminary.
Yeah.
And you're absolutely right.
Would you agree that that's really overpriced?
Absolutely. And so if you look at that one-bedroom, there actually was a number on there, it's three hundred and eighty-four square feet. And when I talked to Dr. Langwell, who you heard from earlier, we said, let's take the three eighty-four out, but let's leave the concept in because that's really there for elevation. This is to reflect that there will be one-bedroom units and, and this is what the elevation is going to look like. So no, it's...
So the math was right, but the theory or concept was a little long.
That's correct.
Fair enough, thank you.
Okay, all right. Thank you for coming and let's, let's get together. You got my number, if you don't, we can get it to you quite easily and I'm sure...
Mike, is it possible for me to speak to that?
Yes, yeah, go ahead.
So, so we looked at the AMI in Gulf County and we're looking at what, what can a sixty percent AMI, eighty percent AMI, hundred percent AMI?
Tell us what AMI is, please.
So it's an adjusted median income, meaning we looked at the median income and if someone's making less than the median income, only sixty percent of that median income, what could they actually afford? We looked at someone making eighty percent of that median income and we looked at someone making the median income. And we actually worked backwards from those numbers and said, if we can't do this for what they could afford, then we can't do this. And someone at sixty percent AMI can afford a hundred and fourteen thousand dollars and that's it. So we recognize the need for affordability and, and we are absolutely crunching these numbers to make sure that we're not going to build something that people can't afford to buy. With the down payment assistance, they could be at a hundred and twenty-nine thousand. And so we absolutely, and again, that's sixty percent, we wouldn't be building a hundred percent of them at the sixty percent AMI price point. But the eighty percent price point can afford between a hundred and sixty-five thousand and a hundred and eighty thousand. So, so we absolutely are in tune to what they need to be to remain affordable and we're conscious of the monthly payment that is associated with that in addition to the electric bill, the water bill and, and regular maintenance. So we're, we're working backwards from what is a realistic affordability, something that is the same or less than an apartment.
Thank you very much. Again, Mr. Rogers, thank you for coming, Commissioner Ashbrook, Mr. Knight, thank you guys for coming and let's, let's continue the conversation.
Can I just say one thing?
Yes, sir.
You mentioned D.R. Horton building those homes. I just want us all to remember, every three hundred and fifty thousand dollar home that D.R. Horton sells creates two more consumers. It's going to increase the demand on the service industry, he doesn't have a place to live. So the more we grow at that end of the scale, the more it hurts the low end of the scale. So you've got to keep that in mind.
Well, well aware of that. And that's why we need to keep the conversation going and, and get maybe pass the idea into, you know, something active.
Welcome calls from anybody, again, you've got my contact information on this.
Thank you. Okay, thank you, sir.
Mr. Rogers, would you please please share this name, the lady that was on the...
If you'll turn it to page seventeen, we have received a proposal for one of our lots on Woodward Avenue. This property is actually adjacent to our stormwater work we're doing on Sixth and Seventh Street. And what staff recommendation is that, you know, it's important we may want to decide so, it's a problem for the six of the stormwater project. We say what the effects are from the stormwater project and then bring it back to you, make a decision if you want to turn it or not. We've had a couple of people that have rented by the property, which is great, but we just got some concerns at the staff level until we get through the stormwater project.
Yeah, I, I think that's a good recommendation. We called right after Sally Dim and I were riding around and that's a bad spot right there. And we wouldn't want to sell it and then get some kickback from the, who we sell it to. There's lots of late now, not a lot. So if anybody have a problem with that, they'd rather move on or wait or, or sell it under the...
Any other option, Mayor, would be to have a contract that's contingent, that we have access to make any corrections that we need before they start constructing. But maybe these buyers are willing to hang on.
Well, you've heard me say, I never take first offer, so the counter would be to go along with staff's recommendation and postpone this until we see, we may not be able to sell part of that lot because we may have to utilize it. So, you know, I, I, I think we need to say no.
Doesn't the drainage run right down the center of the lot?
It's the side of it, I believe.
At this point, it is, we don't know what the final product is.
Okay, all right, we'll move on. Go ahead, go ahead, you got it.
The next item we have is light in the lighthouse, we're including the woods here today to talk about it.
Come on, Mr. Lyman.
I'm in the wood two oh six Long Avenue, I'm representing the lighthouse today. I'm really here just for some guidance. I received a call that needing permission to take some of our business hours to light the lighthouse. I was unaware that we were lighting the lighthouse in October this year. My understanding last year that rise-up was a one-time event and we would have them towered in for three months to go through the Christmas season last year. And that thereafter, perhaps it would be lit for Christmas. So I know it's an educational problem, partially that people in the public do not understand that they need to contact us to get on our calendar for events or, or whatever they want to do in the lighthouse complex. Because we have, I mean, I read the Star Paper and I say, ooh, it's happening at the lighthouse, you know. And that's, we have not had a conflict today. However, we are getting more and more requests for weddings and engagements. And so there's going to be a point to where I have a wedding on my calendar and I read in the Star Paper that somebody has a date planned. So the education I think is on us and we will, we will be doing some things on our Facebook and on our website to educate people about that. But as far as the lighting is concerned, you know, I think we've all enjoyed the lighthouse being lit. The year of the hurricane, it was, it was a symbol of hope for everybody in, in this area. But for our purposes of running the lighthouse, three months is too long. And I, I'm not a, I'm not much of a technical person, but they did an excellent job this past year anchoring the lights when they were put up. But over time, wind and sun, I don't know if the sun makes that stretch or whatever, but we have a problem on the stairs where the, the lines get over on the actual staircase, hitting people when they're trying to climb. And then, of course, they start going out. Last year, by the time they were taken down, there was quite a number of them out. So our recommendation is that we light, if, if the group wants to light the lighthouse, that it be lit for one month. That we start when the city starts putting out Christmas decorations and do through the month of December and then come down the first week in January. And the reason I came to y'all is because I don't want your homes written off the list. I know that there were some people that wanted the lights left up all year and that's not feasible, of course. Because, I don't know about y'all, but Christmas is very special to me, it comes one time a year. But if I left my Christmas tree up all year long, after a while, I'd get to looking at that Christmas tree and it wouldn't mean a thing to me, it's just part of the... And I think that would happen here if we just continue for long periods of time and have it lit. I think the special is that we're going away. So not, not against lighting the lighthouse with white lights, please, but, but we do think that a month, a year is sufficient. The main reason I called the city quite frankly is because I was concerned about power bill. I wasn't sure if the power for the England building had been changed over into our name or not. And it had not. So the power bill will be between y'all and the, the group if they choose to light it for this.
Everybody get a la, a letter in their packet, okay?
The only thing missing there was the cost and you told me what that number was, it was not cheap.
No, it was probably fifteen hundred dollars.
For this light.
The problem is you can't, you can't actually put a timer on such a big system the way it's set up. Whether you have things to go in there and shut it off at night, so somebody will have to go over there. If you don't want it to run all night, you got to go there and shut it off at midnight.
So, so Ms. Lyman, would you have a problem with, let's just say Thanksgiving, the first of the year, simply because it takes a while to get them up?
Oh, yeah.
I, I think we'd all like to have them, see them December one till January one. But if we say December, it may be a week after that that they actually finally get them up.
Well, I'm not sure if the city starts putting up the city lights.
Right after Thanksgiving, right, right.
I mean, I don't have a problem a week in, in November, I just, three months, I have a problem.
I got you, okay, all right, recognition forward.
Well, the lighthouse itself is actually part of the lease year group. See, that, to me, that's the technical part. We, we've been talking a lot lately about the city having more control over city properties and not interfering with people that have a lease. And it's, we've pretty much all agreed, if, if the city leases a piece of property, that leasing is the one, is like the owner. So I, I just think that we would be overstepping our bounds to lease the lighthouse and then on the other hand, step in and say, oh, but by the way, we're going to alter the lease with the lighting. I think the lighting should come from the people that have the property leased.
I appreciate that, I feel that same way too. But I also have dealt with politics enough that I wanted to make sure that y'all all feel that way.
If it sounds good, it doesn't always work that way.
I understand that too and I'm willing to work with anybody.
Okay, the only thing difference of this is we're paying the power bill. So we do have a little bit of a, I guess, a say in the, in the situation. Otherwise, we could say, okay, let them do it, but you got to pay the power bill too, you know, you don't... I, I'm, I'm all good with it.
Okay.
Everybody's good with it, I think you can handle it.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yeah, I don't see, I mean, six weeks, whatever, you know, seven weeks, I'm fine.
Yeah, you're often made a great point. It's theirs to do with what they like and their recommendation is what she just proposed.
That's correct.
Did y'all get that on the record? Well, he just said that I made a great point. I like to make sure that is...
It's part of the...
We got it.
Okay, next, we have planning board membership.
Yes, sir, Mayor. What we have is a sheet as to what everybody's terming, planning boards, that time of year again to be thinking about. You got three members terms that they work in the plan, the board, the volunteer, future volunteers within our community. Just there for your consideration today is how you want to lead board membership for the next one.
In the past, have we advertised it?
We have somewhat, yes, sir, we've done, we've had a combination. And sometimes commissioners will have people they want to put names they want to put for, we've advertised it, we reinstated memberships. So we've done a little bit all over.
Has anyone expressed a desire to leave the board?
Yes, sir.
I know in the past we just let it ride.
Yeah, I mean, we got to make the motion to reappoint them and, and my only thing, and I'm not against anybody on here because they've served us well for a long time, lots of more than their three-year term. But are there other people out there that might like to serve and they don't feel like to get a chance? And with that, I, I mean, I'd like to see us advertise it, bring names forward if you want to, to Jim. And talk to the people that are on here that are getting ready to go on and tell them, we're getting ready to advertise. We do like to, you know, serve again. Their names would be put in the hat for everybody else. Is that fair?
Yeah, the last time we let it ride there, let's give the public a shot.
I, I, I mean, I, I know we have before, we had absolutely nobody interested, but a couple of times we have had people interested in. And number one, talk to people who are going off, tell them we're going to advertise it, they're willing to serve, their name goes in the hat. We get public participation from our ad. Then we'll have to choose, I mean, one, we'll have to choose three.
Okay, we'll go with that.
Just involve everybody.
We'll bring names back to you next year.
Okay, you advertise on the Facebook, website and the Star? Okay.
Yeah, probably Facebook is probably the fastest way and probably the best response back to the people.
Right, right, okay. All righty, write-off policy, we talked about that the last meeting. And Jim's got a policy in your, in the packet that he tweaked a little bit. And just there for your consideration, we've had lots of calls lately about folks that didn't know that irrigation was hooked up to the regular water and that plant the sewer and the water in great amounts. So we give them a chance to get a credit once a year. Jim, you want to kind of explain that, the dark print and the added print?
Yes, sir. The top portion is actually a reference to a leak. If someone has a leak at their house, if the leak is more than three times their average on there, we'll adjust the water and the sewer portion based on six-month average. If you have somebody that says they had a problem in their house, their bills a little higher or they did leak, they were only two and a half times higher, or they were just out washing their boat or watering their flowers, they wouldn't qualify for the leak. Currently, right now, along the way we take off the sewer portion on there is if they were doing a full adjustment. But what's the difference to the guy that water his grass or his flowers or breathing, washing his boat? This would enable us to be able to give a little bit of a break to those folks that had something that happened during the course of the month on there. And it would be based on a six-month average, but it would only be on the sewer portion. It would be, it wouldn't be the full adjustment, but it would be able to enable us to the folks like have the irrigation problem to give them something off their bill.
Everybody kind of understand, kind of maybe understand what he's doing. I asked him if it would be a burden on, on staff, he said it would not. It'll help folks. And at the same time, I told him it's a golden opportunity for us. When somebody comes in and applies for a water tap, tell the folks right then, you, you can buy an irrigation meter to free spring for system if you'd like to. Gives us two opportunities to sell water and, and one opportunity to sell another, another meter. So ask him to somehow put on the, the application that they fill out at the bottom that, that there is that opportunity because if they use city water for irrigation, they're going to have to pay for the sewer also. So it's just kind of a PR thing and good business to, to give folks that opportunity to know that they can do something beside pay extra for the sewer also. So with that being said, we've got, had a motion to approve this policy that presented to us.
Could we make this policy retroactive to, let's say, June one to capture the people that we heard two of the representatives on the houses at Windmark? I mean, I think everyone would agree, they utilized water that went on their grass and they paid us as if it went into our sewer system.
Yes, sir, I agree and that's, and that's the conversation I've had with several of you that we need to go ahead and back and address these folks that have come to us in the last month and that we were on a...
Yeah, so maybe if we made the motion to where we, you know, dated it back to a certain point, it would solve or at least open the door for those homeowners to come and sit down and look at a six-month bill.
I think if you made a retroactive to the billing cycle of July one... I think if you made a retroactive to, to the billing cycle of July one, I think it would come.
That would take the, I'll make that motion.
Okay.
As, as it's read to go back to the Ju-, what'd you say, July one?
July one.
July one actually would be for the water they used in June.
Right, yeah. I think that's fair.
Okay. Everybody understand that? There's a second.
I'll second.
Second, Ms. Flower. Discussion, anyone? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
I owe the same sign. Okay, Jim, we'll change it one more time. Thank you, Mr. Larry. Next item, we have public works. There is a, uh, vacuum trailer request to purchase. And, uh, Mr. Brantley, I'm glad you come forward in case there's any questions about, uh, how you're gonna utilize it or what have you.
Well, this is obviously for the full-time business water and sewer, you know, issues that we see. It's where we can't get the back, you know, back truck into. It's also gonna take a lot of stress off that back truck. You know, we're talking about a half million dollar piece of equipment versus a thirty-four thousand dollar piece of equipment. So any little bit of stress we can take off of that's well worth it. Uh, the reason this is kind of here early, if you will, is during the budget process, we always try to plan for increases. We know in June, come October, typically your supply of all the increases. So we try to get that in, that number in the budget. This particular piece, however, was going to increase four thousand dollars from what we had budgeted. So that was really unforeseen. So this, the manufacturer almost stayed down until September thirty, so we wouldn't see that fourth one on the line. So with approval of this, we get it under the budget in the budget amount and we save four thousand dollars.
So we, that's all covered then?
Correct.
Okay. And motion to purchase, so we, motion by Commissioner, I don't know if that you. And second, Commissioner Langston. Any further discussion? All in favor, aye? I owe the same sign. Motion passed by a vote. All right. Any other questions for John? John, we got a, we got a six-three-seven-three project going, gonna start soon.
That's correct.
Monday, this coming Monday, the state's gonna be on Highway ninety-eight cleaning ditches. So I want everybody riding down ninety-eight and, and see. I got John to get the gentleman to give us a firm date and stuff. I'm planning to get there and do it.
You can do it outside your last big shovel.
Right, right. But the equipment's gonna lead a little bit more than that, as you know, so, uh, so thank you. I hope you keep it.
Not my job, that's the second.
I know. I hope you stay on.
I will. I definitely will.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, though, surface water, Mr. Larry.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Commissioners, on pages twenty-three through twenty-five of your agenda, we have the bids submitted for your approval for chemicals used at the water plant. Uh, if you remember last year, the suggestion by Mayor Butler, we tried to lower our chemical costs by having vendors compete with the bid market. And we did have success last year, and it looks like we'll have some success this year for the bidding this year. Uh, and I'll start with page twenty-three, toxic soda, which we use the PX control. And basing this on the same amount of deliveries as last year, we should save around thirty-five hundred dollars in the chemical.
Wonderful, there. Thank you.
And on page twenty-four, the sodium hydrochloride bleach, uh, we use this for oxidizing and for disinfection of the water. Based on what we paid last year's potential savings for this chemical, it's gonna be eight thousand dollars.
Wow.
And, uh, we were, yes, we were paying a dollar twenty-two per gallon, and that'll go down to eighty-nine cents per gallon. That's for a forty-five hundred gallon delivery.
Fantastic.
Yes, sir.
Lastly, on page twenty-five, unfortunately, the ferric sulfate, which we use, which is our main ingredient chemical, it held its price. Uh, it didn't go up, it didn't go down, but, uh, we do, uh, recommend that we still approve this bid and, uh, put them under your contract deal. We get good service from these people.
We do. We always have.
We always have. We got a lot of help from you.
Yeah.
So for all three staff recommends, we would accept all three of these bids.
I appreciate your work on that, Larry. That's what eleven thousand five hundred dollars just on two of them. That's, uh, that's fantastic. And, uh, entertain a motion to approve the bids for the chemicals. So move for all three. Okay. Mr. Larry and second by Mr. Langston. All in favor, aye? I owe the same sign. Motion passed by a vote. Thanks, sir. Any other questions for Larry and everything good, your?
We're taking along. We did get a lot of rain, you know, last month and now, kind of fighting the language a little bit, but other than that.
I, I'm not sure, uh, auxiliary power, I understand you may have a glitch one day with that.
Yes, sir. We actually took a light, lightning strike right by the plant and knocked out a few things, but we're back up and running now. Full operation.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate it. All right. Waste water plant, I don't see Kevin. I don't guess he's online anywhere, but there is a, uh, wastewater, uh, surface property request, uh, that you got in the packet. A, uh, forty, forty-year-old front-end loader that he wants to declare a surface property. Their motion of, uh, to declare this nineteen eighty interhastal harvester front-end loader.
No.
Okay. Commissioner Ashbrook there, second. Second, second, Commissioner Lowery. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
I owe the same sign. Motion passed by a vote. So we can do that. Okay, Mr. Mike.
Uh, Commissioners, I have some good news on the four hundred and eighteen thousand dollars reimbursement that the state's approved and pushed forward. Two hundred and seventy-four K of the four hundred and eighteen. Uh, I'm still negotiating with them and working with them to clear the rest of it. Uh, but they have pushed at least that much through, and we should see that next week. Uh, and other good news, we, uh, got reimbursement, uh, this morning for the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in Jones Homestead hit our bank account, and that's money we spent over the last two years. Uh, that's been reimbursed, so that'll certainly help our coffers as far as cash flow is concerned.
Very good. And just let you guys know that one, basically, one forty-four, that they're still holding. Uh, that it is our money that was for Ruth, or I think Washington Jim Ruth, uh, served pro to come in and get the water out of the city hall. They're, they're fighting us on that, and even though we're on emergency declaration, uh, I encourage anybody that happens to see our representative, you might want to mention that to him and see if he can, uh, exert a little influence to get them to release that money because it came from FEMA, sitting at the state. It's our money. They don't give it to us where it's going, so, so we, we need it. And, uh, no reason for them to hold it. So let's see if we can help Mike get that. Cause he jumped through, I know they've sent him a, a half dozen different things on the same subject over time, and he responded to every one of them, and they're still holding it. So, uh, we, we need to help him out on that. Any questions for Mike, budget, or anything?
We started a new fiscal year and we're moving along.
Very good. Okay. I think contact yet about, um, CDC contacted yet about, um, the check for community garden?
Uh, no, sir. No, sir.
Okay. City engineer, Mr. Josh, you ready?
Yes, sir.
Everybody getting the handout that, uh, Josh provided on all of his projects?
Get accurate. Um, go through the list. Uh, first items are the north north of water. First, I have port, port. We actually have the follow-up on the call with the agencies tomorrow. Um, can't remember the time, I think sometime in the morning. Um, basically, that's, that's to cover over the last round of comments, and we feel like after we answer whatever questions they have, the follow-up, that'll be a schedule for the second public hearing. I'd say expect attention, but we won't go until we finish that call tomorrow. Um, other is the stormwater master plan. Um, progress on that is we did have somebody out during the storm events taking note on the actual master plan that we've had. We're making revisions of that master map. Expect to complete the actual master map by next week. Uh, the next step on that is the actual report itself. Um, the goal right now is to have a draft report ready to review by the meeting. I think that'll be on eleven sixteen. That's the week before Thanksgiving. Um, that'll be the commission meeting then. So the goal is to have a draft report ready by then. Basically, that report will recommend improvements based on what we found of the review. Um, next on the list is a Ford City Trail. Um, the original agreement with that through D E P had quantities that were incorrect. Um, I contacted D E P and we worked through those items, and we have since received an amendment to that original agreement. So the agreement has been amended to reflect the actual quantities that we have. We've made a submission to D E P. The only outstanding items which they are telling me are that are not gonna hold up them approving the project. The Department of State requires basically for us to submit a letter and them to approve it saying there are no archaeological artifacts on site, and that was submitted, but the Department of State has not answered back as of yet. Um, the signed agreement between the county and contractor will be executed this week, and that'll be sent in, and then we'll be waiting on the Board of County Commission meetings to be sent to D E P. So other than those outstanding items, they have everything they need. And essentially, we'll be waiting on a notice to proceed from them, and we'll provide the contract when they proceed to start construction. Um, C D G sewer improvements, uh, there's no change from the last meeting, the ten to start date is still eleven one. Um, Garrison Avenue, um, is the next one. And of course, you guys can see the progress, but there are two items, um, that we need to discuss there. Um, I'll go ahead and, I can, I can give an explanation. So we've, we've encountered a few issues during the project, and these are unforeseen issues. Um, the first, um, and I've, I've got a change order here before the council that we looked at. Um, during the asphalt cuts, which we had expect out in the project, we actually ran into two large lighter stumps that were beneath the pavement. They were actually causing that pavement to crack. So there was a charge to remove and dispose of those lighter stumps. So there was a total of forty-five hundred dollars worth of change order on those, on the stump removal, the replacement of dirt. And then the larger issue is we had at Sixteenth and Eighteenth Street on the original plan set, we had a drainage pipe crossing, and what it was called is to expose that and to install concrete collars where there were suspected leaks in that pipe. When it was exposed, the pipe was found to be asbestos pipe. Um, one of the pipes at top was collapsed, and then the other one had joints that were failing at the bottom. So we looked at it, the decision was made that the pipe needed to be replaced while, while we had time to expose it. Um, we got an original quote from Robertson Roberts. I think that we approved at a special meeting last week, and I think that price was eleven thousand and fifty-three for the piping.
Yep.
And I'm gonna throw a tinkle in the change order that I have before you. I had a phone call just a minute ago. I had our inspector go verify some quantities and had the contractor verify what actual piping they used. Right here before, we had fourteen thousand four hundred and fifty-eight per day installation of the drainage pipe. That price is actually going to be eleven thousand four hundred and forty-four now. So essentially, it's only changed about three hundred dollars over what you guys originally approved. We were able to verify that the original quote quantity of that amount of pipe is not used. So we're back down at the range that we were before, which is a good thing.
Yes, sir.
Um, so we were able to cut three thousand dollars back off of this change order at this point. Now, our path forward on this, historically, D E T has been, our D O T has been very agreeable to cover small unforeseen issues like this. This was a hundred thousand dollar deal. It may be different. I've already contacted D O T, Jessica Sales, who's the program manager, and their head field inspector, and I've run this by them, and that's what their request was, is for me to prepare this in a formal change order and submit to D O T and ask for their participation. So with the board's recommendation, I would like to submit this today for, to request D O T's participation to cover.
Absolutely. Makes good sense, but what, what's the final, again?
The final number is fifteen thousand nine forty-four. Right there in front of you have eighteen thousand nine hundred and fifty-eight as the total.
Right.
It's fifteen thousand nine hundred and forty-four.
Okay, so, uh, we, we need a motion for this change order, uh, even though we've already approved a change order from, from our special meeting, uh, I, Clint, would we just do the three hundred difference now, or?
The first, the first one, probably eleven thousand dollar change order is going away, correct? The new one is probably three hundred dollars more.
I just, I just combined everything into one, so the best thing to do is probably to approve this change order.
Yeah, let's go with the, I do both.
Yes, yes, and so that, that.
And the other one goes away. Is that correct?
That's correct. Okay. All right. A motion for a change order presented by Dewberry in the Garrison Avenue project, fifteen thousand nine hundred and forty-four dollars. Motion by Commissioner Mason there, second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hoffman. I saw one hand up. We're in discussion. You okay now?
Is that in the packet, the change order?
No, we just got it today. We can copy you if you'd like, but we just got it today.
You, you can have mine if you'd like it.
Yeah, I just got a little concerned that you're telling how something that wasn't even in the packet.
They're out there working now, so. But actually, that number's been changed to fifteen nine forty-four.
That's better for you. All right. Any more discussion? All in favor, aye? I owe the same sign. Motion passed by a vote. Thanks, uh, for that.
Okay, I've got one more.
Yes, sir.
Issue to speak about.
Yeah.
During the discovery of all this on Sixteenth Street, which seems to be our nemesis, there was a manhole in the middle of the street. When the manhole top was pulled, um, it was an old brick manhole. Don't know what it predates, probably the fifties. Um, and it was weeping from all sides, so basically it had eye on eye coming from all areas. Um, we looked at that, and the best thing to do, you know, our recommendation is to make a repair to that manhole while we've got the chance, and also to keep them off from going back and paving around it until we were actually able to do like a C I P P lining. So I did get two quotes that I presented to John. Um, one was from the contractor on site, and I think it was about fourteen thousand dollars. The other one was from the contractor who we've already awarded the C D D G, the North Fork St. Joe Sewer in Britmness, too. That quote was for seventy-four hundred dollars, um, for, for that person to come and line this manhole. So.
No brighter than that.
And I also know that he's confirmed with, with, the original timeline he gave us was two to three weeks, but, uh, John called him yesterday, and he sounds like that it looks like it could be next week when he comes to do that. I've talked with the contractor. They're okay with that.
They're okay, it's not gonna mess him up or anything. Okay. Josh, will you be able to submit that as well?
I won't. We can try, but they don't, they literally don't even cover raving the manhole tops.
Gotcha.
And it's, I mean, it's something that we could take a chance on, but at the same time, when we know we have that much wood space between bricks, if it was something that would collapse and we put the stress on it, I mean, I can't tell you whether it's, whether it'll remain or whether it'll, it'll fail, but.
Yeah. Well, I did, after talking to Jim this morning, I didn't know it was gonna be big, so.
But Commissioner Lowery, you're right. I think what we need to do is draw the approval on this, call it change order number two. We're submitted up, but Josh is right, the chances are slim of us getting reimbursement for it. So just call it change order number two for seven thousand four hundred and eighty dollars to Gulf Coast Underground, and we'll give it a shot.
Yeah.
I'll say above those to D E P.
Okay. Okay. Commissioner Lowery made the motion, Commissioner Langston second, the change order number two for Gulf Coast Underground in Mount, seven thousand four hundred and eighty dollars. Any discussion on that? All in favor, aye? I owe the same sign. Motion passed by a vote. All right. Josh, that's good.
Um, Long Avenue and First Street, they're spacious. Um, I think we're in the same status we have been there. We're, we know we're included in S R F funding, but that's about all we know.
Yeah.
Um, downtown sewer improvement, um, and I spoke the last time, we passed that on to. Downtown sewer improvement, um, and I spoke the last time, we passed that on to actually the same contractor who's gonna perform the C D B G for review of those videos and for a recommendation on scope. He did get back to me yesterday with some actual unit prices that he would use. And now we're in the process of quantifying all of the downtown area and we'll use his unit pricing.
This, this guy?
Same guy.
Okay.
So we're gonna use his pricing and let him do a review when we're able to finish putting together that entire scope. But what, what we plan just for the grant package purpose, we plan to just outline all of the downtown sewer and make, make C I P P pricing for all of that. So we'll have a, a full scope. The last one is, is the gazebo and picnic area and it's in progress. So far, knock on wood, we haven't had any issues. It's been a lot smoother in Garrison Avenue.
Yeah, they're now, they're working on it.
Um, and for that, you know, I, we, we talked about that, I think now we have all of the stuff that we need for the submitted, so we'll be putting that in.
Great, great, great. Alright, questions for Josh? We're keeping him busy, I know that, thank you, Josh.
Appreciate it.
Alright, Jim, Conan Fortson.
Yes, sir, we paid quite a bit of action this past week, we had another hearing, uh, last Thursday from Conan Fortson. We have had one house that's been cleaned up last week and two structures that were removed. Thanks to the property owners that did work with us on it and take some of those off, they do not cost a bad fair amount. And we have one, the city will directly be involved in for the second one in two weeks when we, uh, structure come down Avenue B. So that's scheduled to come down starting next week. We also had a hearing on one on Boulevard, uh, for them to submit a date to bring the property up. Things moving along, we have a lot more to be done, but progress is being made.
Alright, police department, Jake. Y'all calling me a slam here for.
I'll never be a slam. We are getting, right now as we speak, they're, they're pulling fiber to the police department, so we'll get some internet soon. Travis Burke said maybe within the next two weeks, they have to get those people to come weld it together, whatever they do with fiber. So that's the only thing we're waiting on this police department is internet. Other than that, I've been a bad night.
Yeah, so, so your police station's set, move in, except we just got our fiber. I mean, you can't be in there without internet connected.
That's gonna be our phones and internet, so everything we do is on the internet now.
Right, so, well, we're just anxious and I know you probably are too, but I guess you could be moving things little by little that you don't need at the courthouse location.
We've been working in there trying to send stuff that you don't think about until, you know, paper towel.
Sure, sure.
Yeah, just whatever we figure out.
As soon as that fiber, uh, gets installed and all checkouts up speed, you.
We're, we're trying to arrange for, uh, Consolidated to switch this over from the courthouse, because we have a fiber there. They'll cut that off, switch it on at the, uh, police department on a Friday. And we will have Saturday and Sunday to move in and, uh, be back online Monday. As far, and that's just office calls and reports and stuff like that, we have to do at the office. Everything dispatch wise still goes through the county, so.
So do I understand, uh, that we're getting away from Consolidated going Verizon, is that, did I hear that? A big savings to us or something?
Yes, sir, uh, the, uh, cost of the phones was actually less than refurbished phone from, from Consolidated. Because they do not make those phones on the old system anymore. Um, I think that system is from nineteen ninety-nine. So, uh, I guess we're gonna be a little bit of a guinea pig to see if the Verizon system works and is great and, uh, we'll go from there. It's, I think it costs us, uh, the monthly bill's gonna be a hundred and seventy-five dollars a month, which is.
That's, that's.
That's way lower than before. And, and six, six phones and a conference phone for our training room was, uh, about three hundred dollars for six phones.
And the technology will be a lot better than that.
Yes, sir, you, I mean, you can forward it to your cell phone when you have them, so pretty much set up any kind of system you want.
Fantastic. Any more questions for Chief? Thank you, sir. Alright.
Our Ghost on the Coast flowers have been posted, the police department graciously carried those around and invited everyone to participate. We're working on several other things with it, having a lot of inquiries about it as well as Christmas on the coast, we're working on.
That's on the Facebook page and.
Yes, sir.
We got a little disclaimer under there, we call a C D C guy lines or anything.
I'll check.
Please do that.
I'll check when this briefs.
Even though everybody's Halloween, they'll have my ass, but let's, let's, uh, let's hope, let's hope the mamas and daddies will have my ass.
Alright, sir, I'll check with them, thank you.
Alright, uh, anything else, Ms. Shaw?
Yes, sir.
Citizens can be heard, come on up, Ms. Branch.
I'll, I'll be brief, appreciate it. The nerd grant was brought up once again and I looked at the website before I come here and I noticed the same three plans that I told, I asked Mr. Back to last time and he stated to me that, do we have our mind made up of the plans or what, what's gonna go on with this Stormwater Canal?
Well, I just stated that we have a follow-up phone call with the agencies tomorrow to discuss that original submitted, they asked some more questions back. So the status has not changed since I gave you that original answer, we have not. We'll actually be moving to the second public hearing after we finish that follow-up.
So, so these three plans are still on the website that, uh, has been discussed, actually both sides of COVID. And they're, they're staying on there for the public to see, but it seems like we should know by now, have an idea of what's gonna go on in our neighborhood. I mean, as, as, as I've, I've, I've spoke, this, the Stormwater Canal has been there for seventy years, has protected us. And it's hard for me to believe that working with a close to a million dollar grant, that we have no clue what's going, what, what is going to happen. That's, uh, I'm, 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 I'm searching for answers that I've yet to, uh, I've yet to come up with. I'm real concerned, uh, you, 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 do you understand what I'm saying, Mr. Back?
I think so.
Also, if you have to state it, I think the first meeting here, that you were gonna interview citizens.
That's right.
When, when are we gonna start talking to the people that are concerned?
Correct, and I just stated in my update that we would have a second public hearing following the phone call with the agencies. That second public hearing is where we would interview citizens.
So that'll be on eleven sixteen twenty?
That, that is a totally separate project, where we've got two nerd projects. So we have one is the Stormwater Improvement and that's what you're looking at on the website. We have a call with the agencies tomorrow to discuss follow-up questions that they sent us. We have to have that meeting before we can have a public hearing.
Actually, what, actually what I'm looking at, yeah, you're right, well, actually what I'm looking at on the website is the three plans that are put on.
Correct, and as for the first project, we have two nerd grants, we have another one for the overall city's Stormwater Master Plan. So there's two different projects, I think the one that you're inquiring about is the one that's on the website, which is for Park Park. And that's the options that are displayed.
So the three options are played, are y'all gonna, are, are y'all gonna use one of them or are you still undecided?
I think that's what we get discussed is that's, that's what the follow-up phone call is with the agencies to talk over the questions they have. Then we have two more public hearings, you have to have three public hearing groups before choice is even made as to what choice the city's gonna follow.
I, I, I appreciate it, appreciate it.
Thanks, sir. Anybody? Alright.
And I'm, I'm not trying to be a dead force mayor, I promise you, God, it's just, I see in these plans about the pipe. So I'm wondering, is this pipe replacement for this?
I believe so, uh, Josh, correct me if I'm wrong, replacing the one under.
That's what you're looking at, but the, the options on, on the website, as far as what we were gonna do, there was two options with a pond. One had a pond and a wetland creation figure, and one had, yes, a pond, and one had a battle box, um, which was not a pipe. Now, we have proposed in all three of those options to replace the piping from Eighth and Ten Street under the.
Correct, under the, that's where the bottleneck is.
Yeah, and I understand that.
It's leaking too.
Right, and you know, I, I still go back to what Mr., and I'm sorry, I know it's late, I really am. But at what Mr. Robert said, which was, you know, pipe has been a problem, it's been a problem. And so I just feel like to replace an already, a pipe that has always been a problem. I, I mean, what are we really doing, Mayor, to clean up the bay if all you're doing is replacing a pipe and we're still going to?
Well, we gotta do something, I mean, it's caving in everywhere.
Yeah.
Because it's leaking, so we need a new pipe on there.
And many of us knew that before we even started down this primrose path with the nerd grant. And then, you know, some of us discovered that what you really wanted to do was extend the pipe in order to pick up more.
Land.
Yeah, exactly, and the county's little, uh, fancy footwork on that and, you know, that was a little deceptive, it was very deceptive. So I just sit here and sort of shake my head that, you know, is any of this going to be going? Any of the eight hundred thousand dollars going to be going to anything that actually does something? Or is it all about replacing the pipe?
Well, first of all, I, I think that eight hundred thousand dollars is gone, I don't know where it is. So all this is on us and our grants alone.
I know, but you, you got an eight hundred thousand dollar grant from.
Oh, yeah, right, right. That's, that goes, that's part of, you know, the whole nine yards, so, all I can say. If we're replacing, so we're gonna replace it.
And, and in fairness, we did have a meeting and we asked, the citizens asked for things like, you know, plant life and stuff like that, a green belt.
I sent them one of those, you talked about that.
Alright, it's just, I think we're gonna run out of money for replacing a pipe before we even get to money to do anything else.
I see what you're saying. Anyway, I, I think we got three items on there for recommendation and we're not there yet. And hopefully, our first public meeting will, will say this is it and let's go with it, hopefully.
Hopefully, I appreciate you, I really do, thanks for your patience.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, I think Mr. Marvelous wanted to come speak to us.
I like that name, I really do. Hi. Just want to be known, just, just, just in the name of public safety, and this is about, you gotta say y'all, that's the Dan Hawn mask. I'm a little bit concerned about that, okay, uh, that is, we know masks in distance are a thing that it's gonna hold down the spread of this virus. Because the virus is not over with. And I, I'm a little bit concerned, you know, especially when I just came from school board meeting and the crossfire as well, the crossfire announced thirty-six students by COVID. And that's one reason why the game, it gets blocked out, it's not gonna be played on Friday night. So is it, it's true that there's thirty-six students with COVID and we got no mask ordinance, you know? I'm a little concerned. The, the, the other thing is, uh, with that being, uh, the testing, we, 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 I'm pretty glad we made that decision because the testing, positive testing is, is down, why is it down? I have concern, is it down because there are less testing taking place in the state and county, nationwide? Why is it, you know, is, is the testing positive rate down? I'm a little bit concerned about that because I do know the testing is, is, is low. Very few tests is going on these days, so, but I don't think the virus is over with, so I just wanna just consider that, you know? To think about it, uh, uh, see that we need to. We address that.
Yeah, we, we, we made the change because of the governor's statement and seemed to be confusing to the public whether they could wear one or not. And we said, well, okay, we'll just rescind it for now, but we also said we could easily go back and require it. Hopefully, we won't have to, but with thirty-six students, definitely, uh, I don't know if that's just recently or that's over time.
That's recent.
Recent, if that's recent, then, uh, maybe with that, people will be a little more concerned.
Well, it, I think it's fair to say also, Mr. Mayor, that when the mask directive was in place, the school system did not mandate masks for the students. They looked at the city's ruling as not having a direct impact on the school system. So even if we held a line with the mask, the schools never required the students to wear the mask.
Well, I, I, I'm in a classroom right now, uh, three days a week I go over there and teach in, in big county. And, and, uh, there's masks.
I'm talking about Gulf County.
I, I, I know, and, and I, that's when we went around, Brandon, I, I did not know that, that, uh, Gulf County wasn't requiring students to have, to have masks.
Nope.
That's something that I think need to be, uh, be looking to on that, you brought it to my attention, because I would bring that up, uh, to superintendent as well as to, to the board, you know, uh, because we, the only thing that's gonna slow the thing down is masks and just.
Yep.
It's on, it's on thing right now, thanks so much.
Yeah, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, let's, uh, start, I have more citizens first, if not, uh, commissioner items, uh, start with Commissioner Hoffman.
Uh, I have just two items, one since our city engineer is still here, um, I don't think you, you were here the last time. When we start talking about this storm water, and I know this is kind of late, actually, it's very late for me to come up with this great idea, but I just wanted you to bounce it around in your thoughts while you're looking at these proposals. It came to my attention recently, right after all the heavy rain, that we have two major ditches that are coming into the city. And you can call it Chicken Branch, you can call it whatever, it's coming from the river system, Depot Creek. If you look on the satellite map of, of, uh, most of the big companies that are doing the satellite mapping, they actually call the ditch Depot Creek all the way to the courthouse. So if you go back into the woods, which would be south, you'll, you'll come to the intersection of Depot Creek, the ditch, and Twentieth Street. And we have major issues with that, that, that area getting water on some of the lots. Well, it's been told to me that there's two big pipes running under the road. And I think John can confirm this, they run from that ditch, which by the way, that ditch is running north, which is kind of odd. But it goes under Twentieth Street and we dump it into Buck Griffin Pond. So what we're virtually doing, and this probably goes back forty plus years ago, we're bringing the floodwaters of Depot Creek and all that river system to the middle of our city. And I don't know what the logic was back then, but I think maybe things have changed. So when we do have our second workshop, I would like some discussion with, uh, the people that should be the experts. And while they're looking at rerouting storm water and, and making improvements, my idea would be to go back probably on the state buffer preserve land, you'll see that Depot Creek makes.
You'll see that Depot Creek makes a hard right and heads towards this ditch, but it also breaks off and goes to Money Bido, which would take the water completely out of the bay and dump it into Gulf. So, we need to start thinking about, instead of solving the problem of all these millions of gallons of water, and what do we do with them? I wanna talk about in the near future rerouting that water to Money Bido, if it is feasible, without flooding people over there out, so, just in, in conversation, I appreciate it, thank you. And the only other thing that I have is I know the police department's getting rid of some vehicles, and maybe start thinking, maybe we have other departments that are changing out vehicles. But last year, Eddie Fields had approached me and probably a couple of y'all, they need a truck, uh, they still need a truck. We're doing some of the roofing and the, uh, jobs that they work at people's houses. So, if any of our department heads find a vehicle, uh, let's remember that Eddie Fields still needs a vehicle.
He was asked for a COVID group, right?
Yeah, I think that's who he's with.
I got a four-year-old promoter.
Yeah, I thought about that. Uh, that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Commissioner Langson?
Um, I just wanna remind, um, um, the constituents on North, you know, for Saint Joe, let's think about what we want to do with tennis court. Uh, I, I really need, need to know something, uh, soon, so we can go ahead and, and plan what we're gonna do with it. And, um, also, uh, we got a hur, another hurricane out there, so, um, let's, let's get prepared, get prepared.
Yep, thank you, Commissioner Lowery.
Only thing I was gonna mention, uh, Mr. Mayor, is that, um, County has put in, um, a request at D E M. I know everybody's getting calls about mosquitoes, but to do an aerial spray, it's extremely expensive, from what I've heard. They did it after Hurricane Michael, but, um, they do it at night, but they put in a request at D E M to do an aerial spray, and it's, from what I hear, it's extremely effective, so hopefully they can get that approved, so.
That, uh, would, you know, would it, would it help them if we joined in with them and what a resolution or anything like that, if we, I don't know what they did, but how they did it. Find out, I mean, we, we'd definitely time team on with that, for sure.
Okay, I'll find out. Okay. That's all I have.
That's all, that's like the official welcome, or you chief, that's about covering one, you did.
There you go.
And that's all I have.
Yep, thank you, Jake, you hit the road running last night, unfortunately, and, uh, you've got a lot going on. You know, we're here to help you if you need something.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Uh, I don't have anything else, uh, nobody else does, we'll stand adjourned, thank you all for coming.
Okay, Mike, turn it off, go up there to recordings.